Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council's study session for April the 15th. All of our council is present. We do have a full agenda. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, if you please refer to that document. Currently, there's nothing off the consent agenda, but we did go through this on Thursday. Jeremy?
A question of 5V. I just wanted to know on that one, was the owner of the property notified that we would be having a council meeting tonight in regards to eminent domain?
I'm sure you said 5V as in Victor?
Yeah.
Or B?
Yeah, V as in Victor.
5V, okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, yes, they were notified by our outside council that we would be coming before you tonight with this authority, agenda item.
And can you give us some background in regards to the negotiations that have taken place or what's transpired so far?
Yes, so the city had it appraised, this property appraised. We did an offer in writing. We received a counteroffer in December from the property owner's attorney, Paul Gilbert, and the difference of the numbers were a lot.
What was their number based off?
Their number was based off of an agreement that they had, an LOI, with a home builder. They did not have an appraisal to base their number off of, and they have indicated to us that they're not getting an appraisal at this time.
Okay, and so, is this a development company and individual? Like, who owns this specific?
It's an LLC, a limited liability company, corporation. It's Mesa Rose, and they bought the property in 2015 from the previous owner.
Okay, and did we plan on developing this land prior to 2015, or when did we come to the conclusion that we were going to move forward with building the soccer field in this property?
So, Mayor and City Council, this property's been identified since the very beginning when we developed our bond package, and we identified locations for additional soccer fields. So, we've been talking about this property two years, at least, I guess. Interesting to note, the city actually owns a strip in the front.
Five acres.
Five acres in the front. So, because this is an area that's near our shooting range, our recycling center, there's a third-party landfill in this area, but, so we're familiar with this property, have been this development. This used to be, I guess, the first purpose of this property, or the previous purpose of this property was a, what do you call it, a radio farm?
It was a radio tower.
A radio tower farm, there was three.
Radio Disney.
How many, two, three?
I think two.
Two, at least, right? And so then those towers were removed, and then the property came up for sale, and there's been a lot of, there's been some interest in this property that previous councils have dealt with to develop this into residential. Councils have, previous councils have denied that, not as a fit for residential, especially, again, as I mentioned, recycling centers, shooting ranges, freeways, traffic for landfill. So, that's been in discussions for four years, three and a half years, I guess, would you say? Yeah. So, anyway, then since then, in the last couple of years, we have expressed interest, along with our five acres, to acquire the remaining portion for the soccer fields.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, in 2015, when the property, I'm assuming, came for sale, or was it for sale for a while, we didn't make the acquisition then, when the property was on the market?
Well, in 2015, we had just completed our previous park bond election, so we, it wasn't, we didn't have the, identified this particular area at that time, because we had kind of built, we were building out other parks. As a matter of fact, at that time, we were building out River View Park with the soccer fields in that area, or, yeah, in the area of River View where the softball fields were. So, we didn't plan on needing additional soccer fields. But since then, as council is aware of, we've been looking to develop the River View Park softball, former softball fields for, we've had their soccer fields now, but we were looking at developing those, and as we had that discussion, the conversation came, well then, we need to replace those soccer fields at River View in this west side of Mesa, and so looking for property. We obviously are familiar with this property. That's when we decided, in the project for the bond program for Center Street Soccer Fields, to include, this is an identified location. So, we've identified this location for the last couple of years, even to the point where we've done an appraisal, we actually, when we identified the budget for these soccer fields, we included that in the, we identified that as a cost for the soccer fields. So, that's been, I think, you can go on all our budget, or, sorry, our bond brochures and identifies this site as soccer fields.
Do we know when the owner entered the LOI?
Uh huh, I do.
Was it before or after?
It was February of 2016.
In February 2016, with a residential developer?
Yes.
Did they apply for rezoning since 2016?
Not, I don't know.
The owner?
I don't know. I don't think so back then.
I don't, I'm trying to remember when they.
They applied in 2018.
Yeah.
They applied in 2018, I believe.
In 2018, the owner applied for rezon to residential?
I believe so. I don't have the exact date.
And I assume it was denied?
I don't think it's gone through process.
It's not been through the process, they stopped.
You may not know about, but the staff gave feedback to the developer that residential was not going to be recommended in that area, based on the past direction of City Council.
So, go back to 2015, 2016. I think that was the first time, and that maybe not this current owner, but previous owner, who was attempting or seeking to get rezoning from, what is it, agricultural or light industrial?
It's agriculture right now. Because when we annexed it in, we gave comparable zoning.
Okay, so for the towers. When that was sold, we did have a developer come in because they needed to acquire our property, our five acres, and wanted to rezone the additional property as part of this discussion. Council made a decision, again, this is probably three and a half, four years ago, and they said, no, we're not going to agree to, one, sell you the land, nor will we agree to rezone this to residential. We don't think it fits the character of this area. Now, I think since then, it sounds like there's been a subsequent buyer who's made the assumption again, because that they want to build residential here. And I don't, I'm not aware of a recent, like, today, application for zoning on that, but we have been very consistent since this property changed from the radio towers, that the city would not support residential at this location.
Is there any access to this property without going through another owner's property?
So, they do have a contract of the parcel just north of the five-acre city owns, and that is what they're going to be using for their access.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about the eminent domain process and how that, what takes place, and, you know, from beginning to kind of end, just not only for us?
Kim, Jim, who wants to take this one? Not Kim, Jim, okay.
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson. What'll happen is, is we'll file for the condemnation to get an order for immediate possession, which allows the project to move forward, and at that time, what happens is the court will determine initial valuation for a bond amount, and so, and then we'll post that bond. And in cases like this, where the bond, that amount is substantial, many times the parties will agree to release that amount, and so they get that money upfront immediately. And then the difference, the delta that's being disagreed upon, then the parties continue with the litigation with that. I'll tell you, in the last decade, we've been able to resolve every single case without going to trial. We frequently, when we're not able to negotiate the resolution, we go to mediation, and we retain somebody that's an expert in condemnation or property valuation in order to talk to both parties in coming to an amicable resolution, and we've been able to do that for more than a decade now.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Loona.
Just real quick, and you might have said it, so it was, it was appraised at $3,820,000?
Correct.
And so, what was it purchased for? Do you remember? Do you have a record on that? The original owner, what did they purchase it for?
A residential.
We don't have a price.
Oh, a dollar, oh, $1.225.
And they what, $5 million for it now?
$5.7.
Yes, sir. And that, that was purchased in 2015? Is that what you said?
So, they, yes, they bought it from the broadcasting business, the owner.
In 2015?
2015.
For $1,007?
$1.225.
$1.225. So, you can see this land's been appreciating significantly.
Yeah, the parcel did not have access, other than an ingress egress easement when they purchased it.
Yeah.
Jeremy?
I want to make this relative to the other piece of land that we just sold, the park on the northeast side of Mesa, right? So, I think the appraisal for that came in at, or the last appraisal came in at, what, $15 million?
$15.6.
But it ended up going to auction and sold for how much?
$21.1.
So, the appraisal was off by roughly 33%, right? I mean, so these appraisals are, what is that? You're shaking your head, no. Am I doing the math wrong in my head? Sorry.
No, I don't agree that the appraisal was incorrect. It just shows that there was a willing buyer at an auction to pay higher than the appraised value to get the property. The comps that were used by our appraiser did not support that number, but at the auction, there were two competitive bidders that drove it above that number.
Yeah, I guess, so we should separate two terms, right? Appraisal value and actual value. But the point is, the actual value of that specific piece of land was off by 33% from the appraisal amount, right? I mean, so it's fair to say that the appraisal that we have could be inaccurate up to the same percentage, 33%?
I don't think those, I think you can correlate those two.
Mm-mm.
But I would say this, that's why we want to go through this process, right? So, we're going to go in saying, we did an appraisal at $3.8 million, and we think the mitigating factors are shooting ranges, landfills, recycling centers, adjacent other land uses, but we get to have this discussion in front of a third-party mediator, and then they can decide what's the fair price. We'll post the $3.8, and if it's higher than that, and it may be, and oftentimes it is, we'll pay a little more, but right now, we don't feel like it's, we're in the right position to be negotiating above the $3.8. And the fact is that we've not, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, the $5.7 has been a hard number. We haven't gotten anything less than that. So, it started that number, and it hasn't moved. So, we think that they're, they're maybe just more interested in playing through the process, which we see happen all the time. They want to get in front of a mediator or some process to come up with another number, and then usually we agree to it and we move on. So, it's, it's not, this is not unusual in the process of determining value for property. But I, trying to correlate Thomas and Recker with this property, they're.
I'm not correlating the two at all, I'm just simply stating that the appraised value and the actual value of anything can be inaccurate.
Fair enough, I agree with, yeah. Appraised value is not going to be the final arbiter, but I would hope then we don't get hold of that same standard next time we bring you opportunities to sell property or buy property when people are saying, oh, that's way above the appraised value or lower than appraised value. It's a negotiation at the end of the day. So, we get criticized too when we're way off on appraisals, and that's not a fair assessment.
And I guess my last question was, you know, from a tax implication perspective, you know, obviously, if you force somebody to sell any type of asset or equity, it's going to have tax implications, right? So, if we go in and we actually use eminent domain to force somebody to sell a property, do we take into account that individual may have to pay X percentage of sales tax as revenue, as income on that sale?
So, I'm not a tax accountant, but it's my understanding that when we use eminent domain to acquire properties, they are allowed a longer period of time to reinvest that money or to pay taxes on it. We have done in the past letters to property owners when we haven't had to use the process, but they were under the threat of it. Basically, if we wouldn't have been able to come to an agreement, Mesa would have at least seeked to do that. So, they are, they do have longer, a lot of property owners in the past have done a 1031, you know, they own properties somewhere else and they can reinvest the money.
Sure. I don't have any other questions.
Is it, do we have, have we had the experience where a seller will sometimes say, would you please, by the way, would you please initiate?
Yes, we will accommodate it.
Because that puts us in a much, much better position for some of these tax consequences.
And Mayor, I think it's fair to say, this is a very sophisticated seller. I think they know all the rules very well.
All right. Other questions on this?
I have one.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think what I'm understanding, is talking with staff, is the seller is not going to come and negotiate with us until we do this process, and have them come to the table with an appraisal. We've already done that, we've been forthright with that, and this will give them, the, will give us the power to then get an appraisal from them, then we can have a mediator, from what I understand, work on that.
And I haven't heard any complaints, though, this developer's not coming to us and complaining about the process, it's just a normal course, so I.
This is a course of business.
I don't think they're offended by this process at all. I think they're glad to be able to sell the property.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, it's in my district, it's a very tough area. This park would be very well-needed for this area. Obviously, we're losing River View, and to support our parks program and have soccer fields in this area with other activities associated with, this will be a permanent place, a landmark for District One, as well as the other districts that border, and there'll be many people from other, families from other districts coming here. So, I fully support it over the many years. This value of the property is conditional on our parcel, so we own the five acres of frontage, and the other landowner just to the north has a two-acre parcel, and really, to develop it in a residential would be tough to do, because I receive a lot of complaints from the shooting range, which is necessary, heavy truck traffic, there's other egress and ingress for really a residential development. You have the freeway noise to the north, you have country club to the west, so it makes perfect sense to put a park in this area for our community and for our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. One last question. When was the last time we used eminent domain?
Stapley and Southern, just recently, December.
December.
Partial taking.
Yeah, I'm talking like for an entire.
For an entire parcel.
Probably be a well.
Light rail, did we do?
Yes, white rail.
We did whole takes.
About two, three years ago, for the light rail, we did do acquisition for some full take parcels.
Okay.
And they were primarily for drainage basins and things like that.
Well, and even some of those, we actually work out with the property, and it's easier for us to do a full take, so we're not left with a remnant piece, so we agree to do the full take, so they're not left with something they can't use. So, we often have that conversation, too.
All right, any additional discussion on this? Jim?
I'll just add one comment. This whole process, whether it's, I really, I would just state, a personal opinion on this whole process seems messed up, that we have to go through all this process and cost and legal part to do what we intended, whether, and possibly, the property owner wants to do so as well, maybe wants to go through process, but it just seems like it's unnecessary, it just seems like it shouldn't happen at all. And it just disturbs me that even, I understand it's, eminent domain has a bad connotation to it because of projects nationally that have gone on, and it saw the public takes it. I understand within cities, it's course of business, or course of action to do, and now I understand that sometimes there's sellers who prefer maybe to go through the process. The whole thing is, has no clarity about it, as far as, you know, the intention is, seems like it's more of a negotiation, and I don't know.
Exactly what it is.
That's what it is.
It bothers me to be in a position of having to take a position in it, on this, when it's very clouded on both, on both sides, of what processes we have to go through in order to arrive at what should seem like a simple decision, yes, selling, no, my intent is to sell, my intent is not to sell, my intent is to do this. So, I will just express some frustration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, currently, Jeremy, item 5V is on consent agenda. Do you want to leave it on, or do you want to take it off?
I'll request it to be taken off.
Taken off, okay. Well, I'll preserve my comments for upstairs then. Any other items on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss, get council or staff presentations on?
Just trying to figure out more details on, excuse me for one second, I think it was 5Z, the Mesa Town Center annual assessments, I was just more curious, you know, what that is and what we're approving with item 5Z.
So, this is, has to do with our downtown business improvement district. So, each year, there is an assessment that has to be approved by the council, that's collected from the various property owners in the downtown public improvement district, and that all year, what the council's doing is approving that final assessment, there'll be no rate increases, it'll be the same as prior years, and that's how the DMA is funded for the work that they do to maintain and upkeep the downtown area.
And then, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, just one other clarification, is that the action that you're taking this evening is to set the time for the actual public hearing of May 20th.
Okay, great. Thank you, Adeline. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so that stays on, correct? Okay. Council, any other questions on anything on the agenda for tonight? All right, so item 5V will be off the consent agenda, and that's the only item off. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the Development Services Department budget. Ms. Solanka, good to have you with us.
I'm a bit squeaky, I apologize. I've got with me today.
I'm sorry you have to do this, but you're.
She's fine.
She's fine, she's fine. Chase Carlisle, here, he's our senior fiscal analyst. John Schiffer's our building official, and Nana Apia, who you know by this time, the rest of the Development Services team is here if you have questions. Just to briefly review Development Services, we essentially facilitate the land development process, everything from the original rezoning entitlements, all the way through building inspections. We are somewhat regulatory-driven, but what I wanted to focus on here is, we really try very hard to be innovative and creative in facilitating quality development throughout the city. One thing I did want to brag on just a little bit, Mr. Schiffer coordinated the updating of the international building codes this last year. We had been on the 2006 version, it was very outdated, so John worked actually regionally, and we, you recently adopted the 2018 version of the building code. Council, strategic priorities that we primarily focus on, sustainable economy, placemaking, and transforming neighborhoods. We also work very collaboratively on new development or redevelopment with the police department, on crime prevention through environmental design, and we also collaborate very closely with our economic development department on major projects that are coming through. Our primary focus in Development Services is always on customer service. In many cases, our department is the first face that someone sees when they walk in the door, and then the, kind of the last face when they finalize their building inspections and get their certificates of occupancy. One of the things I'm going to ask Nana to comment on briefly, are planning process improvements that we've been looking at over the past year. Beth Hughes Arnoldis actually took the lead on that, starting about a year ago, evaluating the planning processes, and then Nana has implemented those changes over the last six months. We also are always challenged with looking at permit trends, we publish that information regularly. I'm going to talk just a little bit about that, what we're seeing in both residential and commercial development over the last year. Another major focus area, and this was actually a priority of council last budget year, one of the areas that we really wanted to improve our processes was on small business assistance and helping new businesses or expanding small businesses get through the land entitlement and the building process. So, we added a new position, and you see Brian here, who is our new small business assistant. He focuses, along with two other folks managed by John Schiffer, on working with small businesses and homeowners when they come in, and they really need technical help on managing the process. One of the other things that you'll notice here is that we increased or improved our total first floor. We renovated this last year. We're totally electronic, we don't take paper anymore, and we had, because that's the wave of the future, sir. One of the metrics that we track is our ability to provide customer service, and we all know that's an evolving process these days. We've been challenged to make our website more available to our residents, so if they've got questions or they've got concerns, they can get their questions answered. If you'll see the big spike in 17, 18, we attribute that to when we went live with the, our digital permitting system, Dimes, our digital innovation for Mesa's environmental, or electronic systems. So, there was actually quite a learning curve, and we had a lot of folks that we reached out to, we helped them understand that electronic process. We still have a pretty consistent number of calls, you'll see in the, kind of the orange-colored line. Those are calls that come into our call center, they have everything from questions about code compliance, which we still take those calls, through how to manage building inspections, how to apply for permits. And then we still have a fairly consistent level of walking customers, that dropped off drastically in late 2017 when we went live, but we still have kind of a base level of customers that still prefer that personal approach when they, they come in. One of the major things that we track is our call volume. On a monthly basis, we've been averaging about 3,400 calls to our call center. We've implemented new technology in that area. What you're seeing here is the monitor that we've installed in the permit tax office, she actually sees in real time how many calls we've got in the queue, how long somebody is on the phone, so she can then manage her resources, so we can pull people into the call center and keep those call volumes, or the call wait times primarily down. A major improvement that we're going to be implementing over the next several months is a process called Cumatic. This is if you think of MVD, take a number, kind of thing. The courts has implemented this, Business Services is in the process of implementing it. What this will do is allow our customers to pre-schedule appointments, if they want to come in and talk to a planner about their project, they can simply get online, schedule an appointment next Tuesday at 11 o'clock, rather than walking into the lobby and waiting some amount of time. So, we're really hoping that that will make a big difference with our customers and our ability to provide them timely service. It'll also give us a much better way to report and track the amount of volume and the types of issues that folks are looking for. I'm going to ask Nana to just talk about the planning process improvements.
Mayor, Council. So, in our discussion, ongoing discussion with the development community and the residents, some of the main things that we came to identify, that the development community have been looking for in our processes, is basically to have a system that is very consistent, very predictable, and also very timely. So, with that, we revisited our processes and kind of evaluated to see how we can address this three critical things. So, one of the things that we've done in the past, we used to take applications once a month, because that also corresponded with the planning and zoning meetings once a month. And through that assessment, we were able to now start to take applications twice a month for planning and zoning, and also take applications twice a month for board of adjustment. That has also enabled us to be able to start having planning and zoning meetings twice a month. So, starting next month, we are going to be having planning and zoning meetings twice on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. This will actually help increase our timeliness and be, we can be more responsive to those projects that sometimes get stalled. In addition to that, we used to basically review projects, and then we send comments to the development community, and then we wait for them to resubmit, and then we go to hearing. There were few issues with that, it's when they resubmit, there were so outstanding issues. There were few issues with that. It's when they resubmit, there were so outstanding issues that had not been resolved. So as part of our continuous improvement, we have a streamlined system that once we send them the comments, we call them and see if they want to meet with that. So it started, we actually started last month where we met with them on a Monday afternoon to basically discuss and make sure that we resolve the comments, which has actually also improved the planning and zoning meetings. Because there were a few issues that were being resolved during the planning and zoning meeting day. And that's one of the recommendations that we received from the planning and zoning board to look into that so we can avoid those situations. So now because we're able to meet with them, meet with the applicant or the development community to resolve the issues before it goes to planning and zoning board, it has helped to really curtail that. In addition to that, we also, if you look at our timeline, we have specific timelines, review timelines, which has actually given the development community some predictability as to when you submit the application. You are sure you're going to get your comments on a specific date. So they can use that as whenever they do their project planning to really know when they're going to be receiving comments and when they are likely going to be going to planning and zoning board. Overall, that has actually helped us to create some level of predictability. And if you look at it, there is also a major comment resolution there that even if we get there and we are not able to resolve the comments because they need more time. You wouldn't have to wait for a whole month because of the planning and zoning meetings twice a month. You just go to the next schedule and you can still continue on that path. So overall, this is, this is laying the foundation for us to be able to create some stability. So we can begin to look at other major functions that has been left idle, our sub area plans, other comprehensive plans that we really need to start looking into it. So this is just the beginning of things that we're going to be doing. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
And I, you and I have kind of talked about this a little bit, but you know, I'd like to find a way where we can do, where we can actually somehow get out in front of the pre-submittals. Because usually by the time the developer brings in their, or submits their pre-submit, they've either got a contingent or an escrow on the property. They probably spent a few hundreds of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars on the design piece and so forth, just to get, you know, to a certain stage and then be told no. And so if there's a way that we can get out in front of these projects early on, and I know that you and I and, and Mr. Jupiniak meet monthly. And we go over, you know, what the, what the vision is for District Six and what, what the residents like and don't like. And so from that standpoint, we're able to, to say no to a whole lot of things that otherwise would just be coming in. But because we were not saying no at the pre-submit piece, they get way down the line, they spend a lot of money just to be told, that's really not fitting the vision of what we're wanting to do. And by then they spent a whole lot of money. So if, if we can find a way on the front end to, to negate some of this activity, I think it would save you a lot of, a lot of time on the back end of going back and trying to fight. And it certainly would save me and the constituents a lot of time and economic development as well, a lot of time trying to, to push back and, and say no to some of these projects.
Yes, sir. We continue to work on that. One of the other metrics that we focus on almost on a daily basis, Mr. Sheffer manages the commercial plan review time. This is from the time someone actually submits their improvement plan and residential. We have guaranteed published turnaround times for commercial of 18 business, Mesa business days. And residential is 10 Mesa business days. One of the improvements that John is making with this small business assistant is trying to pull up the really small projects. If we've got a, just a new gas line that somebody's bringing in, can we pull that out of that 18 days? So that easy project can get done more quickly and save time with plan reviewers for the more complicated processes. So that's one of the, the ways that we're working with the small business office. On the plan, the commercial plan reviews, John actually has a goal of trying to make sure those plans are ready two days before the actual 18 day turnaround. This allows him to work with staff to basically manage our resources and see what plans need to get out by next week and make sure that we've got staff resources to do that. Total permits issued, this is just a stacked chart, stacked chart, excuse me, showing new single family residential in the blue. That's clearly been the, the major area of activity. The one thing I wanted to point out here, although we've seen a slight drop in residential, the red on the bottom, we've seen a significant increase in commercial development, which is actually excellent when we look at our, our jobs to single family ratio. The projections for 1920 is that those permit activity levels will be up just a little bit compared to 1819. And then a minor correction in 2021 and 2122. And Candace has spoken to you about those forecast amount of economic development activity over the next few years.
Jeremy?
A question on this. So it looks like your commercial, as to your point, is increasing quite significantly, almost 100% year over year for the last couple of years. Do you heat map where those new developments are popping up? Like, I guess what I'm envisioning in my head is a map of the city. Do you have like a timeline heat map where you could sort of scroll back and forth to see where developments are coming and going to? Or anything to keep track of the geographical areas in Mesa to where this activity is occurring?
Yeah, that's a, a great idea to look at how that's changed over time. We can certainly put that together. We've got the data to do it. One of the, the mapping processes that I think you've recently been aware of is work that our GIS person and economic development did. To actually show on one of the city maps where the economic development activity currently is, the, the current projects. And that's been very well received. Most of the development is in southeast Mesa. If you look at what's happening down around the airport and on Ray Road, on the commercial side of it, there's an awful lot of buildings that are going down there. We've had a significant amount of activity up around Falcon Field Airport. But there have been, there's been some activity in the, the center area of the city also. Clearly the focus on that is, is redevelopment of existing properties that maybe are underutilized.
That's great. First of all, I appreciate all of your metrics. I think they're awesome. And if we could work on that heat map, I think that would be a really cool feature. Because I think it would really help us wrap our, if you did it historically, it'd really help us wrap our minds around, you know, where development is coming and going. So if we could work on that in the future.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We'll work on that.
Thank you.
One more comment about, especially when it comes to the timeline with the opportunity zones that are in the southeast as well as other areas. We can see maybe, I don't know, how many developments were possibly in response to the IRS ruling for those investments.
And Mr. Jupiniak, I think is back there somewhere. That process is just beginning and so we're just beginning to see development. I think there's a three-year window on that, if I recall correctly. I'm not the expert on opportunity zones, but certainly that's something that we'll be tracking. One thing I did want to plug here, when we have projects that come in that want faster turnaround time, 18 days is not going to work for them. They want first review comments in 10. We actually have a way where we can either expedite or double, triple expedite their projects. And oftentimes, time is money. That's exactly what they want. So we always work with our applicants on figuring out what kind of timing works for them as opposed to the standard. Okay, this is the financial overview provided by the budget office. Again, the, kind of the bottom line here is that our budget has been pretty constant. It is this year compared to next year. 17, 18 was actually a banner year as far as development activity. The one thing I wanted to basically focus on is we continue to use temporary contract employees to meet the demand. As we see the number of permits increase, John has the ability to bring in contract plans examiners to make sure we're meeting the expectations of our customers. But again, our, our budget's pretty much been constant the last couple of years and we're not anticipating any major increases for next year.
So Mayor, Council, if you're, I mean, if you recall last week, we did provide you, we can update it, or we can modify, but there is a heat map that PD provided to you of the last 14 years of building permits and where they're located. So if you, you can look on there and see that we have that ability to pull those permits out. And we do it by location and you can see that in that, there was one slide that PD provided to you last week.
I thought we just saw that.
Yep.
Does that break down residential, commercial, or is it just?
Oh, you, oh, no, I just said, it was just all building permits. I'm just saying to start off with, you could see that. But if you want to separate, you want to separate the commercial from the residential?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Like where, where is the commercial growth actually happening, I guess?
We can do that. I was just saying for Lisa to start off with, there was that slide we gave last week.
And I have one other comment. You know, Christine, I know we already spoke, but just one other thing that I want to reiterate is that, you know, I think you said for around a million dollars budget, you could actually scan all of the blueprints for all the different houses and commercial buildings. I'm probably saying that wrong, but I think it would be awesome at some point in the future to bring that online as a database that people can go into and actually look up addresses and click on those and see, see the blueprints of different property parcels.
That's actually the plan. We've spent the last several years probably closer to five or six scanning all of the planning files. So those have all been digitized. They're available through electronic management system. For anybody in the public, they can go in and see the full planning case. We currently have somewhere between 65 and 70,000 hard sets of improvement plans for projects. We continue to slug our way through that. It's, it's, it's a big number and a lot of work, but we're continuing to work on that and we'll keep that out there.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
And this is something maybe Councilmember Freeman would know as well, but if we were to scan those, those, those site plans or the, the building plans, would those be available to our first responders, primarily fire? On their pads or whatever, so that as they're responding to an incident, they would be able to pull those up and, and see exactly where they're moving and.
They're there.
Instructions.
Yeah, they're there.
They put them there. Uh huh.
Okay.
Commercial, industrial.
Okay.
Yeah, they're there. They, they, the schematics are there on our CAD systems.
Okay, perfect.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Let me just say, Christine, I want to give you a personal compliment. Occasionally, not all that frequently, but occasionally people will contact the mayor's office and express some frustration about, you know, the status of their development project. And I say, here's the good news. I'm going to refer you to Christine Zalanka. And Christine, here's what's great about Christine. She is neither an engineer nor an attorney.
You're getting me in a lot of trouble here, sir.
But a lot of engineers and attorneys are accountable to her. But I mean, you, you look at things with fresh eyes and with a non-bureaucratic point of view. And so without exception, you've been great in, in helping people negotiate and reconcile all that needs to be done on our side with the, the business world. So I, I appreciate that. And, and the fact, some of the things you presented today I think are particularly important. I love the fact that we've included Brian to be an advocate for the small business folks in our community. I know for the last several years, throughout all the, the slides you just saw, that we've been issuing nearly as many building permits as the city of Phoenix, which is a city that's more than three times our size. And we do that with, with probably, I'm guessing not the same staff sizes.
A fraction of the staffing.
A fraction of the size of the staff.
But that's because we are so good and so efficient.
Exactly. Well, so I think we all need to keep that in, in, in context. So this is a very busy operation. You're under an intense pressure from the development community and people that are, have very short fuses on when they need things done. And so thank you for doing that. The fact that we switched to electronic filings, you're taking all these steps to improve customer service, it's very much appreciated. The fact that we're going to two times a month planning and zoning hearings, that's a, that's a huge deal. So you're good, but you're getting better. And, and I just want you to know that we, we, we see that and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll go make up with my friends, the attorneys and engineers.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 2B, that's the creation of the Mesa Achieves Higher Education Task Force and appointments to the task force. Is there a motion related to that? Thank you, Mr. Una and Mr. Freeman. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Just real quick, I, I noticed that on here, Ms. O'Donnell is, is still being put on the task force. And, and I think at some point in time, we need to, if she's going to continue to be on the education task force, we probably should look at adding another body to economic development. Because she's been such an asset for economic development over the years and, and she's really been kind of devoid of, of that position now for the better part of a year and a half, two years. So it'd be good to, to put a staff position back into economic development if we have that opportunity.
Okay. I think the time commitment for this is probably a couple of hours a month. I don't think it's going to interfere with her duties as the deputy director of economic development, but point taken. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? You look like you have, might want to say some. Okay.
You're not going to share about the Farm Bureau breakfast that you did on Saturday?
Friday morning.
Friday, excuse me. No, okay. You don't have to. I'll talk about how great Celebrate Mesa was.
Why don't you do that?
In, in District Four, in Pioneer Park. It was a tremendous celebration, a great success. And thank you to all the departments who put on exhibited wonderful displays, very interactive, very creative. I picked up a pink hat, engineering hat myself. I loved it. And the, the public loved it. They were very engaged with it. The kids were running around, a great display and fantastic celebration. So thank you for all the work. I know it was a huge amount of work and effort for the city, but I think it was appreciated by our residents and I, I appreciate it and I loved it. Thank you.
Right. Celebration, our Celebrate Mesa was amazing. It was wall-to-wall people, Pioneer Park, amazing facility, amazing day. Everyone was very, very happy that I saw. All right. Next item on our agenda is scheduling of future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll see you for our study session on Thursday, April 18th at 7:30 a.m. at the day before. Wednesday, April 17th is Bike to Work Day, so we will be celebrating that here at the city of Mesa from 7 a.m. to 9 a.m. So we invite everyone to ride your bike to the plaza, enjoy a pancake breakfast or a smoothie. And all proceeds will be benefiting the Roosevelt Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is nice.
All right. This Thursday, we will see.
Safety, orange.
Is it this Wednesday or this Thursday? It's this Wednesday, day after tomorrow. Okay. I will be there on a bike. Counsel, is there anything else before we adjourn this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.